I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Gierbaugh, CEO McClellan Mitchell, Mayor Protam Tahar, and Councilwoman Dillon. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett is not here, Police Chief Renick is also absent this evening, but Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, DPW Director Fordice, City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Skull are here. The rest of you who are in the audience, we welcome you here this evening, and we would invite you to sign in in the back to my left. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, noting that new business item 17-154 has been removed from the council agenda.
Move to approve as amended.
Thank you, Ms. McClellan is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will proceed to the one presentation of the evening, which is Police Advisory Board presentation, which will be led by Councilmember CEO. Jack, the floor is yours, and do you have any other members of your workgroup with you this evening?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Norma Smith is here in the audience. Norma, will you please stand and be recognized? And I believe that's it, other than yourself and, of course, Mr. Campbell. There are five of us, or seven of us altogether on the committee. There is, as mentioned, the mayor and the city manager, both who were ex-official members, Chief of Police Larry Renick, Michael King, who is the Celine Police Detective, he's a former Stockbridge Police Chief, and also a former Washtenaw County Sheriff's Deputy, Katie Nucci, who is a city resident, and also a long-term Ann Arbor Police Officer. I believe she has over 20 years of service with the City of Ann Arbor Police Department. Norma Smith, as we've introduced, one of our city residents and one of our community volunteers extraordinaire, and myself. We met over a period of four different meetings, over a two-minute time period after we'd been appointed by the mayor. We set about studying a number of things. We looked at four different documents the mayor had given us, which were descriptions of the way the City of Grand Rapids, the City of Grand Haven, the City of Holland, and the City of Saginaw have their police advisory groups organized in various ways. All undertake different tasks, and all were apparently formed in a time of some kind of crisis for their community. Most still exist, although they were formed in the early 90s, but don't meet all that regularly anymore. So we looked at all four of those. We also then studied several documents provided to us by Chief Renick, one entitled "The Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement." It's a review of the strengths and weaknesses of various models, and it's published by the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, as part of the Office of Justice Programs. Another one was "A Guidebook for the Implementation of New or Revitalized Police Oversight," and the last was another, "Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement: Assessing the Evidence." And again, this one is produced by the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, a program from the Office of Justice Programs. After reviewing and discussing all that information, several things became cogent, we thought. In the one document that I just mentioned, it was stated that it can still be argued that the least intrusive means of oversight necessary to achieve police accountability is the best means of approaching the oversight function in the long term. That's a principle we've long used in law enforcement, stating that the least amount of force necessary to accomplish an arrest is that which should be exercised. And they adopt, it sounds to me like a very similar view in how to administer police oversight. The same document later stage, "Each jurisdiction must evaluate its own police agency, its culture, its leadership, its overall current capacity to police itself, and its future potential in that regard before choosing the most appropriate form of oversight that will have the highest likelihood of success over time." We did have Police Chief Renick give us a presentation one evening about how many different complaints he's received from the community, and there was very few. It seems like they're very well-equipped, they have a policy in place in the department for the handling of citizen complaints, and based on all the foregoing, I'll read you the final recommendation. It says, "Based on the above findings and the experience of the administration of the Celine Police Department, it is the recommendation of the committee that there be no civilian oversight of the Celine Police Department appointed at this time. Rather, any complaints about misconduct of Celine Police Officers should continue to be handled in accordance with the published policy of the department that speaks to citizen complaints of officer misconduct. The workgroup was in unanimous agreement that there is no significant community -- or that there is, excuse me, that there is significant community support of the Celine Police Department and the work they do, and that the community feels confident in the department's ability to continue policing themselves should the need arise." So that's our recommendation, Mr. Mayor and Council, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. CEO. Appreciate your leadership of this workgroup. Before I turn it over to the dais, Ms. Smith, would you care to make any comment at this time as a member of the workgroup?
No, I guess I enjoyed the process very much, and Jack summed it up well.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate your work. Are there questions for Mr. CEO? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Just curious, what type of other public input was provided, or was it primarily just from the task force, so on investigations or?
It was only from the task force, Mr. Gierbaugh.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
I might comment as a side bar to that, that we felt that with Ms. Smith and Ms. Nucci and the people who are in the department who work closely with the community, nobody felt that there was any probably crying need from the community at this point in time for any kind of advisory group or oversight group, either to review the policies, to investigate, or to follow up on the investigations that the police department does.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to know a little bit more about the process and so forth.
Right.
And I agree with you, I think that from our perspective, that we don't have that need right now at this point to have a committee of that nature, but I do think with our new police chief and the opportunity, we'll have the ability to make sure that transparency, although not so much at the state level, is being supported, but here in the council that we can do those types of things that will more provide information and so forth for the members of the public, and they'll have a little more idea. So we have plenty of time to work towards this if we need to.
Exactly.
So, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gierbaugh. Additional questions or comments for Councilmembers CEO? Well, Jack, let me say again, appreciate your leadership. Norma, we appreciate your service, and I also want to acknowledge Chief Renick, Detective King, and Katie Nucci, as well as the city manager, for their participation. Mr. CEO, I have not reviewed the supporting documents that are in the city manager's office. I believe you enumerate that they're available for review and potential distribution on the last page of your memo, so I do want to -- oh, excellent. I will actually, I would actually enjoy taking a look at those, but what I want to say is, I think there's great value, anytime the community can come together and do an evaluation and have a frank, honest discussion about the state of our police department. I think you and I would agree that public safety, police, fire, EMS are probably the most important services that we provide our residents. You know, many things flow from safety and from security, so exploring ways to make our department stronger and to evaluate it, I think, are absolutely critical, and it's true, we have a community that really values the contributions that our police officers make on a daily basis, and that's a wonderful thing. Not every community can boast that. So, again, appreciate your work on this, appreciate the frank and candid recommendation, and I guess that's it.
Thank you for the opportunity to take a discerning look at this matter.
Very good, well, it was my pleasure. Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on on the agenda, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaugh is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember CEO. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing 17-153, this is special land use, one-on-one sports training. The first motion will be a motion to open the public hearing at 7:44 PM.
Move to open.
Moved by Gierbaugh to open the public hearing, seconded by Mayor Protam Tahar. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to speak, we would invite you to the podium at this time to make comment. Your comments will be limited to three minutes per person.
Move to close.
Let Gierbaugh be the mover again, and Tahar be the second, to close the public hearing at 7:45 PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The public hearing is now closed. We move on to the third and final motion of this agenda item, which is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 14, 2017 memo from Celine Planning Commission, and to approve or not to approve the special land use from section 4.0415B .15 of the Celine Zoning Code for One-on-One Sports Training to Allow a Health Club Gymnasium Business at 1382 Industrial Drive, Suite 8.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember CEO. Mr. Rubel, I know this item was considered and voted upon at the most recent Planning Commission meeting. Do you care to make any comment at this time? And I believe, is the applicant in the back? Appreciate you being here.
Jonathan Kohlenberg is here, and he addressed the Planning Commission also, and did provide some insights onto why the business located, he's part of the business at 1200 Woodland Drive, which is 03 Sports, I think it is, and they need to expand because they've really outgrown their space, so this was available, it's really ideal for their use, so if you have questions, Jonathan could probably answer those.
Jonathan, you want to come to the podium and make a statement, my friend?
Number one, thank you for having me, and again, you know, the approval process of where we're going for with this is actually something to take the weight training aspects of everything that we have in the complex currently, which was always supposed to be temporary, and move them off that court and into something with a little bit more, I would say, grunge to it. So it's just more rubber mats and things of that nature to allow the fitness classes for both youth and adults to be able to be transferred right over there. And as Mr. Rubel said, it's ideal for us because it's literally 1200 meters away, and allows us to continue with the expansion, but at the same time, to continue to affect the middle school and high school communities that are right there, as well as allow the adult aspects of stuff to, again, open up more free time on the court.
Very good.
So, any questions?
Excellent. Any questions for staff or for the applicant? Ms. Dillon?
Is there any issue with the other occupants of the building?
Currently, there's several vacant spaces that they're trying to fill also, and there's, they have adequate parking, we did a parking analysis, and there's adequate parking even if it was full.
I just wasn't sure whether it was going to be a noisy thing, if there's office space or anything in there that would be?
So the majority of the classes that would be handled, besides a 9:30 class, will be a 6:00 AM and a 7:00 AM. We also talk about doing a 5:00 AM class, and then the rest of them will be 4:30 and on. So, any, you know, normal working hours, we're not going to really be affecting any of that.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Additional questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Tahar?
A question for Mr. Rubel, or possibly Planning Commission members as well. So I noticed in Mr. Rubel's memo, which is the last thing in the packet, on page two, item 10, you enumerate parking space rehabilitation to be addressed by the property owner. Is that part of the approval, or is that a strong recommendation to the property owner, or is?
Well, it's sort of a unique attachment to the approval, is that it recommends that staff proceed with that part, because the tenant obviously is not the owner of the property or responsible for maintenance, so that's just enables us to do a follow-through with the owner.
Okay, so this will be staff's responsibility to follow through with the owner?
Right. City staff will then, at this, once it's approved, you know, with this respect to it, that we would notify the owner of his obligations to maintain the property as you would with any site plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tahar. Additional questions? Mr. Rubel, thank you, Jonathan, thank you, best of luck to you. Congratulations on the growth of your business in a very short time, that's excellent. Keep up the good work. Any subsequent discussion on the motion? No, then it's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by CEO, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, item 17-145, this is paving project. This is an item that is returning from our most recent meeting. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 14, 2017 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve and award or not to approve the construction contract to D.N. Higgins Incorporated in the amount of $730,097.75 for adjusted work plan for the 2017 paving sidewalk and park projects, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract documents. Go ahead, Mr. Tahar.
Move to acknowledge and to approve an award.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gierbaugh. Mr. Rubel, do you want to make a brief comment? We talked at length about this issue and the subsequent motion at our last meeting, but perhaps you would care to make a comment or elaborate on information that is in your memo?
We did take the direction given at the last meeting. We contacted, Jeff and I worked with the owner and the construction owners, as well as with our project engineer, everybody agreed to work together, for the benefit of the city, obviously, to develop program in a direction that we would be going in here. There will be a step following this, because then we need to identify those funding sources and what, how much we have and what funds, because there's, we're dealing with like five or six different funds here, so we have to be careful how we would consider transferring, moving the funds, or using some of the supplemental funds from last year, so we would have to work together with the Treasurer's Office on that carefully, and then bring back to council the amendments that you wish to move forward on add-on projects, as we did in past years.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Questions for our City Superintendent Engineer? Ms. Dillon?
Can you just go back over your spreadsheet? I didn't bring mine from last meeting, and just, where are we? Have any of the adjusted bids changed, other than the removal of Salt Spring?
Well, the only items that were changed, you asked to restore Colony, we restored Colony, and then the only thing that was adjusted that carried on?
Can we stop right there? You're saying to restore Colony, to?
The full budget amount for Colony, rather than just a little repair job.
So we will do the entire street? Is that what you're?
Colony Court, I meant, Colony Court.
Okay.
But the plan would be, when we come back with the amendment, that we would consider if there's funding to do Colony Court, Colony Drive, and maybe parts of Lexington Drive and Lexington Court, because those were all together in the budget package, even though there wasn't enough money to do them all together, because there was money put in there for pre-engineering, pre-design, but now we are able to go do some full. So we will carry some of that forward with Phase Two, which we'll come back to the council in subsequent meeting. The only real item that was a deduct here besides all of Salt Springs was the fiber-reinforced item that was more or less an optional item, but that one came in so much higher than our engineers thought it might, and it wasn't really worth the $60,000 for adding fiber reinforcement to the asphalt.
Okay. Sometimes I just get lost in your words. So where are we at budget-wise with our numbers? I mean, we're under what you have as budget available, but we weren't that far over before, and now we've taken $100,000 out. Have we accounted for the money that we're keeping for Salt Springs somewhere?
Well, they're all in different funds, so we have to go back and determine through the Treasurer's Office what to transfer from this fund to this fund. What's coming out of Perpetual Care Fund, certainly you deal with that one fund. Some of these funds are not interchangeable with numbers and transfer numbers, plus there are some fund balance numbers to look at also, as well as what's in the budget.
I understand that.
So we will?
My question is, did we keep money for Salt Springs somewhere that we had discussed?
Well, there's still, well, there's still $100,000 in the budget for it. We have to amend the budget if you want to change that.
Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
If I may, so, per council's direction, my understanding is to maintain, I believe it was $32,000 for a?
Match.
A match for a grant that we're currently working on, that I believe is due in April. So, that is, that much is going to be, we're going to hold on to that much. And then the rest, to Mr. Rubel's comments, we will be taking a little bit deeper dive. Within a week's time, it was just too difficult to bring back, to thoroughly evaluate and then bring back, so our plan right now, I believe, is to bring it back at the October 9th meeting, is that correct? Or the 23rd?
Either October 9th, but judged by the calendar, it might be the week following.
Okay, so?
That might be better, because we do have to take a long look at, we have to do, actually, the engineer has to perform estimates on some of this extra work that we want to add, add on.
Sure.
So we do have to do, besides the estimates, we have to look at the scheme of how to plan these out properly.
Right.
And get accurate costs, and then we can come back to council, probably the second meeting in October.
Right, so with kind of, so we want to, so we can get moving on these projects here, but we may be, we're hoping that we're going to be able to do some additional work as well between now and, you know, within this fiscal year. I mean, obviously, as we talked about at the last meeting, some of these things won't be done until the spring.
Right.
But it's part of a package, and I think, to me, I think this is a great way to do these things, trying to get more efficient, right, especially when you're, lack of funds, trying to put these things together and share and get cost efficiencies and sharing some of the costs with the design work and that type of thing, so.
That's fine. I guess my question was, I wanted to make sure that removing Salt Spring, that cost did not get absorbed into the other projects.
Right, okay.
Because we had deleted something.
Right, correct, correct.
And so we still have extra funds to do other projects.
There's money in the general fund, you can decide what we do with that at the next meeting.
Right, okay, thank you very much.
Additional questions? Mr. Rubel, thank you very much. Appreciate your work on this. As was alluded to earlier, we have more needs than we have dollars, but these are, these are projects that must be done. I appreciate the approach, and let's move expeditiously to rectify some of these things. Is there subsequent discussion on the motion moved by Tahar, seconded by Gierbaugh, to acknowledge receipt and to approve? No, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to motion B. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 14, 2017 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve the Midwestern Consulting Proposal of Combined Construction Administration and Inspecting and Testing Services at a not-to-exceed amount of $47,725.2 for 2017 paving sidewalk and park projects, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the professional services agreement.
So moved.
To acknowledge and to approve, Mr. CEO?
To acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Mr. Rubel, anything you'd like to add?
Mr. Scott Fisher is here, as he was last meeting, however, he did not, was not given the opportunity to answer any questions, because that was, that part of the motion was tabled along with Part A, when they got postponed. MCI and the lead engineer, Scott Fisher, has done many projects here. He actually is one who turned in the preliminary site plan for the Hotel Ace project last week, and also is designing the utilities and the roadwork that goes into those, so he's also here, probably in conjunction with that item later in the agenda. This motion is basically the same, just updated slightly on some of the moving forward items, and then taking out the Salt Springs, I noticed on, I put on page two, that it was deleted, along with the two parts of the Torwood subdivision project. So it basically remains intact, even though Salt Springs was removed, we will replace that with, when we get to it, the engineering and inspection needed for the add-on projects. And then we will, as part of the amendment of Part Two of the paving project with the contractor, when that's amended to include the add-on projects, we can look at amending this proposal as well, so they would both come back as an amendment to, for the newly converted project package.
Very good. Mr. Fisher, do you care to make any comment?
Only have to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Is there any question for either Mr. Rubel or for our representative from MCI? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Rubel, I was looking at the back of the packet that you submitted, there's a spreadsheet that says, "City of Celine, 2017 Paving and Sidewalk Projects, Construction Phase Fee." And that's an estimate of staff hours and costs, so this document, it does not look like this was altered between our last meeting, so there are still costs and quotes for Salt Springs. So my question is, is this document, is this spreadsheet binding, or is, you talked about an amendment, can you just help me out with?
Right, well, we would, Salt Springs, they know is off the table and deleted, so it would not be, this is, their spreadsheet is only like a supporting document for what hours they would put into the project as a whole, for all seven, even though one's deleted. Those hours would then be used for one of the add-on projects, or two of the add-on projects in place of it. We just don't know what those add-on projects are at this time.
So, I guess I'd like to clarify with Mr. Campbell.
Please.
Is there any liability that we face by signing something with this schedule attached to it?
Well, the short answer is possibly, I mean, we can certainly modify that, we can remove that out and bring it back, if need be, but typically speaking, I mean, it's, they're not going to, they're not going to do the, and again, the long relationship we've had with them, they're not going to overcharge just because they have the ability to.
Yeah, I can, let me give you one, I have that help, is that tomorrow, the next day, once this is approved, tomorrow we have to actually draft the professional services agreement. Now, the professional service agreement, they're executed by the mayor and the clerk. When we draft that, we will definitely indicate that Salt Springs work is not included in this professional services agreement, and that it's only the projects that are approved tonight, and not Salt Springs, and then that amendment, or that, when the add-on projects come back, then we will amend that. So, the professional service agreement itself, which is the legal document that's signed by the mayor and clerk, would have Salt Springs omitted.
So I guess, Your Honor, I'm kind of between a rock and a hard place, because I want this project to move forward, but I am uncomfortable.
Unless there's objection from the dais, I appreciate the concern.
Okay.
I think we just strike that line item from the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any objection to that? Okay, that line item is removed. If you have additional questions, please.
I beg your pardon, so when you said line item, so there are line items, there's staking for Salt Springs, there's field inspection, so, so anything?
Yeah, any line item, I appreciate the correction. Any line item relating to Salt Springs should be omitted.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Thank you for that. Mr. Gierbaugh?
But then that comes back to the dollar amount that's being approved, so I understand that's the question where it comes back into it. Since we're striking that in the dollar amount, we're actually approving a dollar amount without necessarily understanding what that additional work's going to be. Can?
Let me grab, let me get Mr. Campbell in here real quick, Mr. Tahar.
Sure, yeah, I mean, if we wanted to do it this evening, to move ahead, which I would, I would recommend we do that, it would be less than the 40 I would, I would recommend we do that, it would be less than the $47,000 put forth, so.
So, if I made an amendment to say less, less Salt Springs?
Less than, right, right.
Projects and associated dollar amount?
Exactly, yep. That wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
We can, we can monitor that also as we go through the process, because when they turn in the invoices, they, they have to note, separate between the projects, so we'll know precisely.
Yeah, well, not only that, though, we'll have, we'll have the correct number, right? So, minus that, per the, per the motion, we will, the agreement will reflect the new number, which is my, which is less all the line items reference, reference Salt Springs.
Did you want to make an amendment, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah, I would, just to keep it corner.
You want to restate that for the clerk's benefit?
I think Mr. Campbell mentioned saying, less than the Salt, wait.
Is that right?
$47,725.2, well, actually, just state, less, less the Salt Springs projects and associated dollar amount.
So, after the 47 number?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to reread, you want to reread his amendment then?
Okay.
Read the totality of, of the motion and then his amendment included.
To acknowledge receipt of the September 14, 2017 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble to approve the Midwestern Consulting Proposal of the Combined Construction Administration Inspection and Testing Services at the not-to-exceed amount of $47,725.2 for the 2017 paving, sidewalk, and parks project, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the professional services agreement with a friendly amendment to remove the Salt Springs project and those line items.
Or actually, associated dollar amount.
And associated dollars, no?
Right.
Okay, and associated dollars.
You're comfortable with that coming at the end of the motion, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Is there a second to his amendment?
Second.
Don't we have to vote on the first one first?
No, we have to vote on the amendment first.
Right.
So, I'm sorry, who is the second? Seconded by McClellan. Okay, so, what we're debating and considering at this moment is Mr. Gearbaugh's amendment, okay? So, any discussion regarding the amendment? Ms. Tahar?
So, if we remove the dollar amounts associated with Salt Springs from being approved, does that also mean we don't have any leeway for, for these services, for the, for the projects that then may be added on when we go back and amend the project?
We'll bring that back at the same time. Bring additional, we'll bring another agreement.
So, we would then approve back?
Correct, correct.
The funds specific to the add-on projects? Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion or comments on the amendment offered by Mr. Gearbaugh, seconded by Ms. McClellan? No, then we're going to vote on that additional verbiage. All those in favor of the additional verbiage signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Any subsequent discussion on the motion? No? Mr. Ruble, thank you. It's been properly moved by CO then and seconded by Tahar to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay?
Very good. We move on to, thank you, Mr. Ruble, again, appreciate your work on this, and again, some items related to infrastructure needs will be coming back sometime in October. Is that correct? Very good. We move on to new business item 17-155. This is sidewalk bid, award, and contract. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 12, 2017 memo from DPW Director Fordice and to approve an award or not to approve the 2017 sidewalk program construction contract to Midwest Construction Concrete and General Contractor Incorporated with a base project fee of $47,945, with the total project cost to be based on actual quantities.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and award?
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is, you know, another step in our sidewalk maintenance program, what we've been referring to as Phase Two, the phase after the trip removal project. So, this is where we're going to actually replace some concrete, rather than shaving off trip hazards. These are panels that are cracked or deteriorated, or the trip hazard is too great for the cutting technique that we've utilized recently. We hired Stan Tech Consulting to select an area of the city to focus on and prepare bid documents for us. They also gave us the, all the address and quantity information and the cost estimate so that we could, the city staff could prepare letters and sidewalk repair agreements to send to the affected properties. The mayor noted at the last meeting that we have really good response on that. We've got a lot of people signed up, and we expect some more to kind of come in, in these, this last couple of weeks here. The contract documents were set up to allow for some flexibility in the final quantities so that we can offer that service to folks who are late to the game. The total, almost $48,000, a little more than half of that are city responsibility ones, sidewalk repairs that are related to city tree roots or utility structures. About $23,000 of it will, of this total, will be invoiced to those folks who have signed up, and then will receive payment for that. Any increases in the scope would be for homeowner responsibility items, and those would also be invoiced at the end of the project. Budgeting for this, we do have $25,000 of Metro Funds set aside for sidewalk repairs that will fund the city responsibility, construction phase of it. However, we had sidewalk funds set aside, but those are being consumed by the Torwood sidewalk repair, this part of the project that we just awarded. So, this project is in need of an additional $19,500 to, to fully fund all of the things that the city has signed up for. Couple of options on that. The Torwood repair, we could utilize local street maintenance funds for that instead of sidewalk funds, or we could take some of that Salt Springs money that was also just discussed and apply it to, to this project. Whenever you free up $100,000, there's many ways we can use it.
What, remind me the number again, essentially $19,000?
$19,500.
Okay. I mean, my preference would be to utilize some of those funds that we remove from a permanent parking lot and pathway through Salt Springs Park.
Okay.
Okay. Are there questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Fordice, is that it for your presentation?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions for our DPW Director? Ms. Dillon?
Can you remind me, what's the problem with the sidewalks in Torwood?
We've got an intersection there where there's a catch basin between two of the ADA ramps, and there's a problem with the, I don't know, the ceiling of the structure. So, water, rather than entering through the inlet that it's supposed to enter through, is kind of coming in from all sides and removing soil underneath the sidewalks. So, we've got sidewalks that are undermined, we've got this storm structure that is allowing water in where it shouldn't. So, it's a fairly expensive repair because it's a very deep storm structure. So, that needs to be exposed and repaired from the inside, and some of it from the outside. And then all of the sidewalk needs to be replaced. Because we're doing that, we're kicking in new ADA regulations, so we can't just put it back the way it was, we got to put it back better. And then, because we're putting in a proper ADA ramp on this one corner, we have to put in proper ADA ramps on the receiving corners as well. So, one small problem quickly multiplies into a larger project.
So, is this a design flaw?
I mean, storm structures leak, you know, it's, they, they're all pretty much built the same way. I think the positioning of this one makes it a little more susceptible, this problem. It's certainly not the only storm catch basin that we have that eventually this problem happens. Most of them, it'll happen at some point in their lifespan. You know, after 20 years or so, the mortar in the chimney section of it typically deteriorates, and you have to either point that from the inside, or sometimes you have to remove the whole casting and rebuild it. This one, because of its placement between these two ramps, when that happened, which pretty much happens to all of them at some point in their life, the results are more serious because there's a sidewalk right there, and there's these two ramps right on the side of it.
Well, thank you very much for that very clear answer. The other question I have is, can you define what the quadrant is that you're working in?
It's pretty much the southeast quadrant, Ann Arbor and Henry, so kind of south, southeast, yeah.
And have you identified what would be next and what your timeframes are for the other quadrants?
No, that's actually, the last phase of the consultant's contract is, once we're done with this construction, we'll have a kind of a wrap-up meeting and suggestions for process for next year, and, you know, then we'll look at where we're going to go next year.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions for our DPW Director? I'm sorry, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just a statement, because I'm in that quadrant and will benefit from this being done to my property, I will not be voting on this. I have a financial interest in it, so I will be abstaining.
Your abstention is noted. Additional questions for our DPW Director? Subsequent discussion. Jeff, thank you very much. It's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve an award. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and one abstention. We move on to new business item 17-156. This is ordinance number 792, UAW rezoning request. This is, this will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 14, 2017 memo from the Saline Planning Commission and to approve and adopt or not to approve proposed ordinance number 792, changing the zoning at 601 Woodland Drive East from R1A Family Residential to OS Office Service.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Ruble, do you want to make a comment?
The Vice President of UAW 892 is here tonight. It's Lynn White, the lady who came over to introduce herself to me over there just a little while ago, and sorry if we were speaking a little loud, but the request went to the planning commission, and it was heartily explained and understood there, and the recommendation was to approve it because it actually puts it into conformance with both the master plan and the intended uses on the property. We're encouraged to do it, to do it at this point because, as Mr. Robinson explained at the last meeting, apparently, the big three had negotiated to combine their legal services into one. So, therefore, the local branch is not needed for that, so there's space available perhaps for another tenant. The tenant, who is very interested in the property, is here tonight also. It's Kimberly Kilgo, who would manage Kim's Kitty Castle. So, part of the building would be turned into a daycare, certainly is a good facility for, it's a good location, right by the schools, residential neighborhoods, large ones, and right on the main thoroughfare, easy access. They have plenty of parking because it was built initially with space for assembly use because they would have activities there in a, in a large room, you know, like get-togethers and kitchen and other facilities. So, basically, it works out really well for both the UAW and for the potential daycare center.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ruble or for the representatives of the UAW and the tenant, prospective tenant? Mr. CO?
Do they operate right now under special land use?
They were originally, they originally built and received the site plan approval under the special land use provision, correct. Otherwise, they could not have built in a residential district. Maybe Mr. Gearbaugh can remember that, 1990, but I should mention also that the daycare center use will come back to City Council also because it's a special land use in itself, just because it's a daycare center. They require licensing and special land use regardless of the zone that they're located in. So, you will see Ms. Kilgo back here with the special land use request.
Any other questions?
Just some comments.
Comments?
Planning reviewed it. Part of the thing was that the UAW had mentioned that they would still continue to use it as, for some of the functions and things that they had been, but it's the ability to be able to maintain the property as part of the union in order to, to actually own the property and maintain it, they need to have some other revenue coming in. So, one of the things is moving it into this office service need, which is consistent with the stuff around that neighborhood, so we felt that that was pretty consistent with what we wanted to see happen there.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Ruble, thank you very much. Any subsequent discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-217, Extension of Purchase Agreement for Lot 18A of Sauk Trail Business Park. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 12, 2017 letter from Jim Junga of Sauk Trail Court Properties LLC and to approve or not to approve the request from Sauk Trail Court Properties LLC to approve Addendum Number Three to the Real Estate Purchase and Development Agreement as presented.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by CO to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. I'll get you on the next one, Ms. Mitchell. Mr. Campbell, do you care to make a comment, and then we can entertain some thoughts from the applicant?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very straightforward request from Mr. Junga and his team, reference the purchase agreement for Lot 18A in the Sauk Trail Business Park, which is reflective of the terms of the purchase agreement, to allow a final extension, requesting, requesting extension for 90 days going forward for the, specific to the due diligence period. So, I believe they're here, if they have any comments to make.
Gentlemen, do you care to make any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. We appreciate your time this evening to consider our request for an extension of the purchase agreement, and we request the extension to complete some due diligence tasks, namely working through the site plan review, which was submitted last Wednesday, and also to complete our capital structure. Much work has been done. We've made significant progress in all aspects of the development process. It's taken a little more time than we anticipated, but we are very close to getting it over the goal line. We're very pleased and proud to share that most of our committed investment, our financial support, 90% of it has come from local Saline residents, individuals, and businesses. It has truly turned into a local project. Initially, we considered other investment platforms, which are still possible to tap, but may not be necessary with other local interested individuals yet to firm up potential investment participation. So, we continue to welcome other local participants to participate. So, I'm happy, we are, as a team, to answer any questions you might have right now.
Very good. Mr. Junga, Mr. Heisler, anything you'd like to add, gentlemen? No, appreciate your time this evening. Questions for our city manager or for the petitioner? No? Ms. Dillon?
There's a statement that says funding for the new hardware store has been approved. Has it been approved and secured?
Mr. Junga, do you want to?
What does approved actually mean?
So, what does secured mean?
Have you raised the capital that's needed? Do you have the funds to build?
I have the, I have the capital to do it, and I have the commitment from Bank of Ann Arbor to finance what I need to.
Okay, good to know. The other thing I wanted to ask is that you're talking about a due diligence period through December 15, and then you've also made a statement that you plan to break ground before the end of the year. It could be a really busy two weeks.
Well, we anticipate to finish our capital structure within the next two to four weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Subsequent discussion. Well, let me just say this, Mr. Kirkendall, it's very exciting to hear that the overwhelming majority of financial investors are from the Saline community, and I think that's indicative of the fact that the hotel project specifically has been a target business for this community for a number of years. And obviously, you bring a lot of expertise and credentials to the table. I know that you, along with Mr. Heisler and Mr. Junga, have worked very hard on this project. As you articulated in your remarks, I know that the goal line is in sight. Keep plugging away. I believe that this is important to the Saline community. I think it will enhance the quality of life. It will take a parcel that's been publicly held for decades, transfer it to the private sector, jobs will be created, our tax base will grow, there's a number of tangible benefits. So, I'm cautiously optimistic, I think you are as well, and let us know what else we can do to be helpful.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're very optimistic. Thank you.
It's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Eyes have it, the motion carries. We move on to new business item seventeen dash one fifty-seven, electronic communication policy. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the electronic communication policy as submitted.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Seal. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Mr. Campbell, anything you'd like to add at this time?
Just again briefly, as you may recall, it's been, I believe thoroughly reviewed by, by council and staff as well in the, a while back, but this was, of course, you may recall, came about in preparation for City Council going over to utilizing the tablets, electronic tablets. So yeah, before you, and do our best to answer any questions anybody might have.
Any, I don't know if there'll be any questions. Questions? Ms. Tahar, okay, next one.
Yes, on page five at the top, letter F makes a reference to the city's records retention policy. Do we have a records retention policy?
We do, through the branch office.
Okay, well, I should familiarize myself with that clearly. Thank you.
Why don't you, that's a, that's a good point. While the policy is pretty innocuous and straightforward, why don't you email that document out to council members sometime this week? Thank you. Additional questions? Subsequent discussion? Discussion, Ms. Dillon?
I still am not in favor of this policy. I don't like the language that restricts City Council from having contact with the public via social media, and I also don't like the, on the last page, E, that states that we are up into including dismissal or removal from office or service on behalf of the city. I, I just don't feel as though this policy would warrant that level, and it is so open-ended that it could be interpreted in a lot of ways, and I would not want to be removed from office for posting something to Facebook.
Additional comments? Ms. Mitchell?
I heartily agree with Ms. Dillon. I will not be supporting this in its present form.
Additional comments? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Tahar, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Who are the nays? Show of hands, please. Eyes have it, the motion carries. We move on to new business item seventeen dash one fifty-eight, Brecken Play Structure. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September thirteenth, twenty-seventeen memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs and to approve or not to approve the purchase of Brecken Park Play Structure from Miracle Midwest in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Ms. Scruggs? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you need a motion. Caught me on that one.
Move to, sorry, move to approve.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
And approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaum. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Thank you. I apologize, Ms. Scruggs.
Thank you. Just to kind of go over the whole process again, you might recall the name Donovan Gillow. I'm not sure what grade he's in right now, maybe sixth grade. So when he was in third grade, he started this whole process, kind of kicking, kicking off, wanting a play structure at Brecken Park, which is an excellent idea, kind of jump-started our, our CIP program. That was a few years ahead, and so we, we started working on it a little bit earlier. But we do have all of our funding in place. We have gotten a, I worked with Dillon, or, excuse me, Dillon, your name is Dillon. We worked with Donovan over the summer to look at different components and, and really got a good feedback from him. We've worked with our, our park commission as well, and we have a really good structure with lots of different, really neat components that will, will enhance the park very well. And Miracle worked with us to give us a good, a good bid. They are part of the, the National Joint Powers Alliance, which is, we had joined last year when we purchased our Teft Park Play Structure. So they're, they're already, they've been vetted, and these are best, best bids that we're receiving. And so we're looking for your approval to, for the purchase of that play structure. What we would do is, if, if you do approve it this evening, we'll get that ordered tomorrow. We will take, we'll start working with DPW. Jeff and I have already, have been working with Dan Bennett to lay this out. They can start the site prep work, and once we take delivery, we can hopefully get this installed before snow flies.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your work on this, Director Scruggs. I'll also note that the process of enhancing Brecken Park specifically by investing in a new play structure was, as you mentioned, a cause that was initiated by one of our young people. And so I'm cognizant of the fact that one person can really make a difference if you put your mind to something and you're really aggressive and assertive and focused and outcome-oriented, and that's pretty impressive that it was done by such a young man. So I should also add that in addition to benefiting him as a resident of that neighborhood, it will, it will substantially improve the park, and I think it'd be enjoyed by many young people for many years to come.
I would agree.
Are there questions or comments for Director Scruggs? Ms. Dillon?
Will it be, will there be a surface underneath? Will it be the way it's here?
The, the surf, the, the safety surface is called Fibar. It's a manufactured, like wood chips, and that we're not purchasing through Miracle because they're a middleman. So we can purchase that directly, and that will be, that will be part of our, a separate bid. We don't, we don't really bid it, but we get quotes for it, and so that would be a separate purchase. But that, we still have money available to cover that.
Okay, that was going to be, so there's money to pay for that because this doesn't qualify then as ADA unless it has the surfacing underneath?
Correct, yeah.
So will that be put on as soon as it's, so that?
We have to have the install, yeah. So DPW will be doing the site prep, so excavating, and then we'll put down a fabric barrier, and then, once the install is done, then the, the safety surface comes in after that.
And do they need to be maintained?
They're exactly like all of our other play structures all around town.
So, no, I meant the wood chip thing?
Yeah, we have, we have the same wood chip at Mill Pond, Mar Pool, all of the other play structures in town.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Gierbaum?
You mentioned general fund contribution. Is that coming out of Tefa or is that not in the Tefa district?
It's part of the general fund.
Okay, I just was curious, just to see if we had other funding sources. It's interesting, just looking at the structure and how, how it's so much different than what we currently have, that I take it as related to some different in, safety reasons and means or just the approach of?
I'm not sure.
I'm looking at the structure, it's so different from what we've actually seen before, and I'm just curious, is it more because of design changes or is it primarily because of safety reasons?
Well, there's thousands and thousands of different components you can pick from to put on structures. I can show you the, I don't have the book, I wish I had the book that I had Donovan look at, but he had little tabs and marking all of the really cool things he liked, and he was very thoughtful in making sure, he wanted to make sure young kids had opportunities as well as the older kids and, and maybe some ADA accessible components as well. So he was super thoughtful in reviewing the, the vendor book to, to pick good components that everyone can enjoy.
So this was kid-designed, not adult-designed?
Correct, yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Seal?
What's the purpose of the bell?
I'm sorry?
What's the purpose of the bell?
It's just a component. It's, it's an audio, audio, audi, audio?
Audio.
Audio?
Whatever.
Something fun. We have one, we have the same type of thing at Mill Pond and at Teft as well.
Thank you.
Even grandsons, don't they like to bang things?
Unfortunately.
It makes them sound.
Silly question.
I'm thirty, I'm thirty-three, and if I were on the play structure, I'd go right for the bell.
Got to gavel.
Yeah. I get it. Additional questions or comments for Director Scruggs? Carlo, thank you very much. Subsequent discussion? No, that's been properly moved by Gierbaum, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item seventeen dash one fifty-nine, bucket truck purchase. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September twelfth, twenty-seventeen memo from DPW Director Fordice and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a new VersaLift VO two sixty installed on a two thousand nine Ford F seventy-five chassis with a Cannon Truck Equipment of Shelby, from Cannon Truck Equipment, excuse me, of Shelby Township in the amount of one hundred nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seal. I should have acknowledged at the beginning of the meeting today, you do have a supplemental, that's what pertains to this motion. Am I correct?
Correct, yeah.
Very good. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The draft FY eighteen budget included one hundred and ten thousand dollars for purchase of a replacement large lift truck. That was one of the items that was removed and made contingent on the closing of one of our land sales, similar to the accounting software that council authorized purchase of, I don't know, a couple months ago. So this truck would replace our thirty-one-year-old fifty-five-foot lift truck. That truck needs to be certified annually as a safety inspection and needs certification. At the last certification, they suggested that might be the last certification. Typically, these types of vehicles are decommissioned after twenty years of service, and ours is in its thirty-first year. So it's, it's served us well, we've gotten our money's worth out of it. What we did with the amount of money we had available is configured a partly new, partly used lift truck. So the, the lifting mechanism is a brand-new unit, and it's, the one we're proposing is slightly larger than our existing one. The new unit would be, have a sixty-five-foot working height versus the fifty-five-foot height, and it would be mounted on a two thousand nine used chassis. So in the supplement, the pictures there, the top two are of a, that's a twenty fifteen Ford F seven fifty chassis with the exact same lift mechanism that we're proposing here, and then the bottom picture is indeed the actual two thousand nine F seven fifty that, that this unit would be mounted on. So that's it.
Very good. Questions for DPW Director Fordice? Mr. Gierbaum?
Actually, it's not for Jeff, it'll be, it'll be about the funding. We mentioned that we're buying this from land sale money. Which land sale money are we buying that from? Because I'm concerned that we have debt and then we also have potential issues if that one property doesn't get developed.
Certainly, yeah, this would, obviously, this would be from the Zippy sale and is, to Jeff's point, you may recall, was, it was discussed as considerations. It wasn't, I mean, automatic by any stretch, that everything, you know, there was, I think, three or four items that were, staff had, had recommended that if we have land sales, that they would be considered at that time. And so because of the, the land sale for the, the Zippy's auto wash, and that's what, that's the money that, as Jeff pointed out, that's the money that paid for the software for the treasurer's office.
Just from my perspective, and maybe this is future understanding, is just to make sure that we don't overcommit those funds, because one of the concerns was with the W, waste treatment plant, if we need to bridge some money, that was one of the things we identified, although I think we have funds in our, in our, in our fund balance to help support that. The other piece just being that I want to make sure that whatever debt or anything that's outstanding in those industrial parks are resolved first before we really start.
Sure, sure, and that's why we, again, we wanted to bring it before you, for you, just because that, that truck is, is the age, and so while we do have a smaller bucket truck, the, the bigger one, we would end up, if we can't use that going forward, we will have to, for tree, for our bigger tree trimming projects, we will need to contract that out if we don't have the proper truck to use, and so it's, that's why we're kind of bringing it forward at this point.
Okay. From my perspective, I would rather just this be out of our fund balance and not necessarily being, as you stated, tied to.
Sure.
To the sales, because there are, those funds are so restricted to say that, except for the ones that potentially could be from the DPW sale, but that has a whole funding mechanism to itself too, because of the way they're going to be paying us back as they put improvements and so forth. So from my perspective, I'm just, I've got a few concerns. I don't have a problem purchasing this, but it's, from my perspective, it's not land sales from which this should come from, it should be out of our fund balance.
Sure, and if I may, I certainly have no issue with that whatsoever, and technically speaking, I mean, the, the money from the land sales go into, right into the fund balance. So, but, but certainly, yes, I understand what you're saying.
There's other priorities I just wanted to say.
Sure, absolutely.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Seal?
Mr. Fordice, do they give us any kind of a guarantee with a used vehicle like this?
The unit, it's, the, the whole thing has a, a one-year guarantee, and, but our, our mechanic has looked at this, this used chassis and feels very comfortable with it. Even, it, it's a diesel, it has a lot of miles on it, but we don't need to go very far, and the, the type of engine that it is has an excellent reliability history.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
So when you talk about a twenty-year service life, that's for the boom, for the lift? Or is that for the whole?
Yeah, we expect the chassis to last that long, too. I mean, our current bucket truck has a thirty-one-year-old chassis under it as well. So, you know, so in twenty years, this one will be twenty-six, twenty-eight years old.
Right, but you were saying that they are normally decommissioned after twenty years.
Correct.
Is it that they don't want to certify the lift? And could the lift be taken off and put onto another chassis?
It's the lift itself, yeah.
It's the lift itself?
The lift has, pretty much, it's limited to a twenty-year lifespan.
Has a lifespan, it, it doesn't matter what body it's on.
Correct.
Okay, because I was going to say you're, you're halfway at your lifespan with this truck.
Yeah, it's the, the lift unit itself is a.
Now, the next question is, what would the cost be to rent a truck? I mean, would it equal out to one hundred and ten thousand dollars? I mean, what are, how often are we using this vehicle?
We use our lift truck quite frequently. I mean, we don't do large tree removals every week, but we find multiple other things to use it for. As City Manager Campbell mentioned, we do have a smaller lift truck that we got to make some of those shorter height things easier, particularly along Michigan Avenue with all the additional banners and light fixtures and flower baskets that we have. We needed a, a shorter boom truck to avoid problems with swinging on in traffic. This one, its, its primary purpose is the, the tree maintenance, we do annual trimmings, we do a number of removals, but it can, given its, the flexibility of its, of its boom configuration, it can be used for sign installations. It can be used for, now, I just said, I thought it was escaping me, I don't know, but it, it, it does get used throughout the year. The life that we get out of it, you know, that we expect to get twenty years out of it, we will be money ahead purchasing it versus renting it.
Oh, I trust you on that, you definitely make the most out of your, of your equipment.
We tend to keep things around for quite a while, yeah.
Thank you.
Additional questions for our DPW director? Subsequent discussion on the motion? No, that's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Councilmember Seal, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Hang tight here, Mr. Fordice, I think the next two are yours as well.
Yep.
New business item seventeen dash one sixty, sponsorship of Celine Area Historic Society grant application. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September fourteenth, twenty-seventeen memo from DPW Director Fordice and to approve and adopt or not to approve the resolution authorizing sponsorship of the Celine Area Historic Society grant application after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to approve, to acknowledge receipt, approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I think it was three years ago, the city applied for a CLG grant that funded the, the conditioned assessment report of Ranzen Farm, and it identified a number of issues that needed attention. And the society has essentially, well, these issues may have chosen themselves by kind of becoming very serious, and we do have Doug Elfring and Jim Peters here from the Historical Society who can speak to the specifics of this project. I'm here to speak to the mechanisms of it, and we also have our grant writer here who can also give you more information about the, the mechanics of this grant application. It is a very, it's a voluminous application, there's a lot of documentation that's needed to apply for this money, and this time, we're going with the city as a sponsor rather than the applicant, simply, basically because of the timeline. These are due October first, and for the city to be the applicant, we would have to develop a fairly detailed legal agreement between the society and the city, because the society is providing the matching funds. between the society and the city, because the society is providing the matching funds. And we just don't have time to draft that agreement. So instead, threw together this resolution that would make the city a sponsor of the grant application. And then, because it is a certified local government grant, the city would receive the funds. But by doing it this way, we have more time to develop that agreement between, you know, who's going to, who's going to contract what, who's going to pay for what, how the money's going to flow. With us being a sponsor, that agreement doesn't need to be developed until just prior to the final agreement between the state and the city.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Gentlemen, Mr. Peters, Mr. Elfring, do you care to make any comment at this time? Please.
I just wanted to say that our volunteers at the farm do enough law work themselves, painting, carpentry work. We have a window replacement going right now. But these two particular projects really take a professional contractor. For, in the case of the hog house, it's a two-story building with a 45-degree pitch roof, and roof is in bad shape and it's crumbling. And it's really not a good applica, not a good job for volunteers to be doing. We need a professional roofer with the right tools, scaffolding to get through that. Now, chicken coop, same situation. It's a failing foundation, and it's work that's beyond the skill set of the volunteers. So this is really a job for a professional.
Well, let me say this. Appreciate Mr. Fordice, you and the Historic Society working expeditiously to get this on the agenda. I know this was the last item to be added to tonight's agenda. Mr. Gearbaugh has brought up some of these issues in the past. Mr. Peters and I actually just recently met about these. I am strongly in support of the application and hoping that we are successful. However, I want to note for the record that if we are not successful, I hope there's commitment from the DAAS to adopt some budget amendments to work with the society to get this work done. Because as I've mentioned in the past, Renshaw Farm and the Depot Museum are essentially city parks that are maintained by the Historic Society. They're important to our character and our identity. And when historic buildings like this deteriorate, if you forego or delay those costs, it just ends up costing you more in the long run. So again, strongly in support of the motion, appreciate everyone's work. Are there questions for the society or for DPW Director Fordice? Jim, why don't you hang tight, just in the event that there's questions that you're, you're better prepared to answer. Ms. Dillon?
I just wanted some numbers. What is your estimate for the cost repairs and what are the grant numbers?
Mallory, would you like to address that?
We have a full team here tonight.
Hello. My name is Mallory Bauer, and I am working with the Historical Society and Jeff to write this grant. And I helped out with the last condition assessment report grant that was funded. So I have great experience with this team. So what we're looking at, we had a couple of contractors come out and kind of look at the costs of doing some of the work on the chicken coop and the hog house. And just construction repairs are about $15,000. As part of the certified local government grant, we also have to put together plans and specifications that follow the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation of historic buildings. So that will add some cost, because we'll need to hire someone through an RFP to put together those plans and specifications. I'm still putting together the budget, but I'm looking, the total cost will be between 20 and $25,000. It's a 60-40 match, and, and the Historical Society has offered, is going to pay the match. So that'll be between $8,000 to $10,000 on, on the society's end.
What is the timeframe for approval of the grant?
Yes. So they should get back to us soon in the new year of 2018. And then we're going through the timeframe where between getting the plans and specifications, it'll take about six to seven months. And then it'll be about six months to get the contractors through the RFP and then the construction work done. So hopefully, within a year to 18 months.
Okay. And Mr. Peters, Mr. Fordice, do you feel comfortable letting those projects go out that time? Or is there going to need to be something done prior to that?
No, we do have some temporary supports. It's a long time out. You're right, I wish we could get through it faster than that, but that's the way the mechanism works. So we have put some temporary supports to help maintain structure until we get to the construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for the, our DPW Director or for the petitioners? Subsequent discussion? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Because I'm the treasurer for the society, I will be abstaining from this one, too.
Abstention noted. Any additional discussion? No? Gentlemen? Ma'am, thank you. Appreciate your time. This is a motion on the floor moved by McClellan, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge receipt and to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And one abstention. Ayes have it. The motion carries. Last action item of the evening, 17-161, lease of sewer combination machine. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 14th, 2017 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to authorize or not authorize the lease of a Vector model 2115SE2-100A from Jack Donie Companies of Northville, Michigan in the amount of $58,669 per year after review and approval by the city attorney and municipal finance attorney.
I move to acknowledge receipt of the memo.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tarz. Mr. Fordice?
Thank you. The Vector is probably our most critical piece of equipment. It also happens to be our, by far, our most expensive piece of equipment. This device is used for preventive maintenance in our sanitary sewers. It's used for emergency response in our sanitary sewers. If there's a blockage, this is the machine that clears that blockage. It's critical in water main repairs. We, we work very hard to perform our water main repairs under pressure so that we can avoid boil water advisories. And when you have a broken water main under pressure, there's a lot of water coming out of it. And with this machine, we can control that water and make for a safe and workable excavation. It's also critical for excavating in areas where there are multiple buried utilities. If we have fiber optic lines, we don't want to be using even a hand shovel, really, because those things are very delicate and extremely expensive to repair. With this device, we can, it can act essentially as a gigantic shop vac and just vacuum the soil away and leave gas lines, electric lines, fiber optics unharmed. Our current, and Vector is a brand name. The generic name is sewer combination machine. So our current one is a 2006 Vector. And we have had a fair number of repairs in the last two years. And in FY '17, we had $11,000 of repairs on it, which took it out of service. One of those repairs, those were three separate repairs that took it out of service. One of them took it out of service for two weeks. And because it's such a critical machine, we couldn't tolerate not having it on hand for emergency response. So we rented two different machines and incurred $7,000 of rental fees. And that's just for two weeks of rental. So it's a, it is a very expensive machine to rent. But we took that opportunity to look at what brands were available and what features are available. So we rented from two different companies. We rented one from Super Products and one from Vector. And then after that experience, we were able to get demonstration, another demonstration unit from Super Products and another demonstration unit from Vector, and test those out, actually, you know, put them to work, cleaned sewers, cleaned catch basins, did some excavations, did a pump station clean out. And so we got, you know, we got our hands good and dirty looking at these machines. And, but as I said, they're exceedingly expensive. So originally in the budget, we had placed purchase money to purchase one in the neighborhood of $425,000. And that just wasn't feasible. So we started looking at various finance options, which traditionally the city has not done, because we've had the funds to purchase equipment. You know, it's always better to not pay a finance fee. And the way we maintain things, they last a long time. And we get our, our great money's worth out of it. This machine is too expensive right now for us to just buy it outright. So we looked at simply just financing it. We looked at leasing it. And we came up with kind of a combination package where there, there are five annual payments. And then at the end, there's a balloon payment. And we have the option of either making that balloon payment and keeping the unit, or basically turning it in like a lease. That's the effect of it. The, the reality of it is there are two different agreements here. One is between the city and a financial institution, and one is between the city and Jack Dohany Companies. So the agreement with the financial institution is basically a five-year loan with a balloon payment at the end. The agreement with Dohany is a guaranteed buyback amount that equals the balloon payment. So that's what gives us the ability to just turn it in and walk away. They guarantee they'll give us $160,000 at the end of it. That's what the balloon payment is. We're free and clear. We can walk away. Or we can make that balloon payment and keep the unit. Or my preference would be to take advantage of that guaranteed buyback and get a new one, so that we continuously have a rotation of five-year or less old Vector machine on hand.
Mr. Fordice, real quick question. Considering the importance and frequency of use, is that typical to get about 10 years of life out of that type of equipment? Or did we do, did we exceed the, the average?
I think we've exceeded the average. I mean, the machine, there are certainly units out there that are this old.
Sure.
And most of, they tend to have a fair number of repairs. It, the nature of the work, the machine is under a very strong vacuum.
Right.
There's water and stones and grit and all kinds of things flying through there at 100 miles an hour. And so it's a, it's a, it's a tough business this machine is in. So, you know, the number of repairs we had is not unusual.
Okay.
There is still value in this machine. You know, exactly how much is not super clear. It's always hard to predict how much you can auction something for, but
Right.
The, the existing one will be auctioned, and then
Okay. Very good. There are questions for our DPW Director? Mr. Gearbaugh, then Ms. McClellan?
Jeff, what's the difference? When I look at this and I look at the price differential between you saying buying a new one and then a very lightly used one, it's only like about $20,000.
Yeah.
And I know it's the delivery time. But what's the definition of lightly used? Because I don't want to buy someone else's problems if it's
Right.
That situation.
So this, the unit, the used unit that I'm proposing we purchase is a factory demonstration unit. So this is a machine that was put together by the Vector Company, and they take it with a trained technician to various communities and say, here, this is what our machine can do. But there's always a trained technician there. So it's not like a rental car, you know, that people take out and spin the tires off of it. It's, this machine has always been under the care and operation of a factory-trained technician. The chassis has less than 2,000 miles on it. And the, the unit
So it's brand, it is a brand-new unit within the last year or so?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And it, and it is indeed the actual unit that we demonstrated on.
And then the other piece of it being, shoot, give me a second here. Just got to tell you. Oh, warranty. So it has the exact same warranty as a brand-new one?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that it, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, sir, and Ms. McClellan?
I was just curious if you know what other municipalities do. If they're purchasing, like, does Valen purchase their? I assume all municipalities have one.
Not all have one. But, and then others have multiple. I think the most common is to purchase it outright.
Okay.
And then hold on to it.
Okay.
But there's a lot of communities in our situation, too. That's why Dohany has this program available.
Okay. Just curious.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
So with essentially being a lease, are we required to maintain it to a certain standard? Does it have to go to their mechanics, like a leased vehicle? I mean?
No, we, we do the maintenance on it. And, and that's kind of part of the, part of how they factored in the financing option, is they know what kind of work we do and how we take care of our equipment. So that factors into that buyback amount. They know it will retain value in our hands.
So would it be in our best interest to keep the old sucker as a backup machine? So that you'd have two? Or is it, what's more cost-effective? Because if this one were to go down, you'd still have to have a rental fee. I mean, theoretically, it's a new vehicle.
Correct.
And it shouldn't go down. But if it were, then you'd have a backup in place that we're not paying on, correct?
Right. The, one of the benefits of this plan is the availability of free loaners.
Okay.
So when we're dealing with this company and we've got this purchase arrangement, if, if there's a warranty issue and it goes down, we get a free loaner.
Okay.
If there's a non-warranty issue and it goes down, we get a greatly discounted rental rate. So the, that would be my preferred approach to, you know,
No, that's definitely a great perk.
Keeping the other one around, it's kind of, it's kind of one of those machines that doesn't sit well. It needs to be in use and maintained regularly, or else it just kind of decays away. So I think our, our best value there is to auction it as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. I'm very pro-Vector. I want us to have a Vector, and, and I trust your recommendation. I have a question, again, about contract language, and this might be for Mr. Campbell. So right now, if I look at, I guess it's the second page of this packet, it's the back of it that says Jack Do, Donie, Dohany Companies. There's some writing there over the model number, you know, it's a different model number.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And on the, I guess on the front of that same page, on the front of page two, you know, there's a, a scratch out. So I guess I'm just concerned
Yeah.
About having markup language like this in, in front of something.
Those are actually my markups.
Okay.
And, and yeah, those are essentially typos that we didn't have time to correct, given the, again, the pressures of getting on the last agenda before, you know, we have three or four weeks off. So the agreement needs to be reviewed by our city attorney and our municipal finance attorney.
Okay.
So all of those, you know, those details will be in those final agreements and, and only signed after review and approval by those two attorneys.
So I, I understand that. I, I understand. I'm very grateful it's going to be reviewed in general. I am reluctant to pass things from the DAAS that have that kind of markup and the markup we saw over the sidewalk. And I would just like to make that request. And I, I don't know that I could comfortably move on it tonight unless our attorney was looking over it. But I would just like to make that request.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Additional questions? Jeff, thank you very much. It's a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tarz, to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated September the 14th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to authorize or to not authorize?
I'll move to authorize and to include in it the $160,000 value. I mean, we state the $58,000 in here, but do we need to reflect that $160,000 balloon payment at some point? Because it is, I wasn't sure. When you mentioned one about buying back, we would buy it at $160,000 at that point in time if we wanted to keep it.
Yeah.
So somehow to put that balloon payment in this motion, so at the very end of it, including a potential 160 thou, wait a minute.
I don't know that.
No, never mind. I don't want to put it at this point. I'm fine with the motion the way it is. Sorry.
Good.
My misunderstanding.
No, no. So you're good moving to authorize, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tarz. Discussion. No? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council members. Ms. McClellan?
Jeff, just wanted to let everyone know that Jeff, just wanted to let everyone know that Parks Commission is meeting tomorrow night at 7:00. And we will be discussing Peoples Park parking. Again, I brought this up at the last meeting, but if you have opinions or thoughts on that, please come and join us. Also, Youth Council is meeting tomorrow night for the first time for this calendar school year. So I'm excited to get that kicked off. And it's a good team of kids this year, and looking forward to working with them.
Good. We'll give them our best.
Will do.
And make sure that you extend on behalf of everyone on City Council our best wishes and thank them for their service.
I will.
That's great. Additional Committee, Commissioner, Task Force reports. Mr. Tahr?
Yes, I have three, actually. The Arts and Culture Committee will be meeting this week. And happening this week, the first of the second wave of art around Celine Works was installed this afternoon, and the next four will follow soon. The Environmental Commission is also meeting this week, and I'm just taking the opportunity to remind you once again of the Washtenaw County Cleanup Day on Saturday, September 30, from 9 till 2, at the Celine DPW Public Works Facility on Tef Court. And finally, an update from the Washtenaw Urban County Executive Committee, which, on which I sit as the mayor's alternate or designated, designee, I guess.
Designee.
So just as a reminder, the Urban County Executive Committee is the body that recommends to the county, the office, the county, the Washtenaw County Office of Community and Economic Development, the expenditure of the CBD, Community Block Grant Funding that comes back to the county. And the funding that comes back to the county is based on the who is members. So it's based on, not everyone belongs to Washtenaw, the Urban County. So funding is, is, comes back based on who's a member. So the money that comes back to Washtenaw County by virtue of our membership since 2012 is approximately $10,000 a year, which is not a whole lot of money in the greater scheme of things. And there are lots of restrictions on how this money is spent. So when we entered the Urban County, or joined the Urban County, we thought, City Council at the time, thought that we would more likely be a donor community rather than having the money actually spent in Celine because of the restrictions that are placed on how the money is spent. But then, in 2015, when Celine Area Social Services received their new property and expanded services and expanded programs, there was an opportunity to use CDVG funding for that facility. The funding can't be used for services, but it can be used for facilities and infrastructure. So the money that was originally earmarked for Celine Area Social Services was an accumulation of several years' worth of the annual amount. And that is received because of our membership. And the, as the facility improvement moved forward, lots of volunteer effort was put in, which meant that the money that had been allocated could be set aside and earmarked for a parking lot, needed parking lot improvements, part of the facility. And, as it turns out, a new stormwater filtration system was needed as part of this, as part of this project. So the amount that was originally approved, once the bids came in, was not sufficient to cover the whole project. And so what the Urban County Executive Committee is planning to do is, unless we have objections, is to use not only the original $40,000 that was set aside from our previous allocations due to Celine's membership, but to add also the 2016 and 2017 money to that original amount, so that the entire amount of the parking improvements and stormwater filtration system in the parking lot can be completed with these funds. So we don't have an official way that City Council says yea or nay to this. So I'm announcing that this plan is in place and hope that no one has any objections.
Excellent. No, it's very good. Ms. Mitchell?
Just a clarifying question.
Yes, it's very confusing.
There was a lot of word. So where is this improvement?
Celine Area Social Services. Got it. Parking lot. This is their, the improvements they need to make on the parking lot itself and the area of the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Tahr. Appreciate the update. Appreciate your advocacy. Additional Commission Committee or Task Force reports. Reports or other announcements. Mr. Girbaugh?
Just wanted, I'd like to inform everyone to attend harvest time at the farm on October 1 from 12 to 5. Celine Air Pilares are going to be there doing Adventures of Tom the Turtle, and the Celine Retire Iron Vintage Tractor Display, similar to what we had out at the Fourth of July. But that'll be something that's really interesting to see all that come out. So, again, it's the first of October from 12 to 5.
Very good. Ms. McClellan?
Just wanted to, I just wanted to remind people that tomorrow is the last Tuesday's farmer, Tuesday Farmer's Market at the Renshaw Farm. And it's family fun, so they're going to have face painting and music and kids' activities from 3 to 7.
Very good. Additional reports or announcements? Ms. Tahr?
Well, just a reminder that Oktoberfest is taking place this weekend.
Yes, I hope to see you up there. And in the spirit of Oktoberfest, I should acknowledge that there is a whole delegation from Celine who is traveling over to southern Germany, Lindenburg, our sister city, and then visiting Austria. Mr. Seo and his lovely wife, I believe, leave this Wednesday. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then Ms. Tahr, Mayor Protam Tahr and her husband, and about 30 others.
Lovely husband.
Not your husband?
My lovely husband.
Your lovely husband, yes. Sorry, my faux pas.
Well, you know, lovely wife.
Yeah. And actually, I will be joining them. We leave next Tuesday, and will be gone for approximately two weeks. So wish us well. We will give your warm regards to our friends in Lindenburg, and we look forward to having a marvelous time. So. Mr. Campbell, do you want to give us an update on Waisawar Treatment Plant?
Sure, very brief. So the Nova filters continue to work properly now for five weeks. And then, we received one odor complaint over the weekend, this past weekend, which was the first one since August 23.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Campbell? Ms. Dillon?
I'll just add about odor. I was at the cemetery working on the rotary project on Saturday, and there was definitely an odor. It was more like stagnant sewer water odor than the overwhelming smell that we'd had before. So I wasn't sure if there was something going on at the facility.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, then we come to public comments under the open meetings. Any citizen may come forward at this time, may counter question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Any citizen comments? Is there any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening? Please note upcoming meetings, and the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:11.
So moved?
Moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Seo. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it.